Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, and it is 6:09 PM. Roll call.
Jim Shine.
Here.
Anne McIntosh.
He is not.
I want to re-talk on this area with this other one.
Uh, no.
Jason, are you here?
Yes. Yes.
Andy Campbell.
Yeah.
Mike Parsons.
I'm here.
Michael Parsons.
Mike will get a hold of us and he is excused. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose book we're liberated, in whose justice we serve.
Mayor's report. Planning committee vacancy. We still have one vacancy on the planning committee. So, well, hopefully only one after tonight's meeting. Interested candidates should apply. A Street paving. So for anyone that's been over here on A Street today, you've seen that the new asphalt's in. Nice looking road over there. So they did run into some soft spots down the center of the street during construction, and so it did require them to put in some, excavate that material and put in some rock and some landscape fabric so that our new street would last. A reminder that the Lewis County still has their survey up for hazard mitigation. So if you'd like to give your input, go ahead and feel free to take that survey. Warden and McMurphy Park vandalism. And so week before last, there was graffiti, and it was all similar graffiti, so it's from the same culprit. In the bathrooms, both at the, at both parks, they had it on the porta potty down there at McMurphy and in the bathroom up at Warden. They had it on the new pavilion on the, on the white vinyl posts. The whole post was covered in graffiti and on picnic tables and so. That was over Memorial Day weekend. It's been cleaned, we ever cleaned it up. So that was, that was great. So we're looking into that. The Sheriff's Department's been contacted. There's a case number and they're, they're following up on that. Vader Water Systems, with the request of the council, I've started conversations with our consultants about that. So various ways to go about approaching that and the teams needing, and the plans that'll need to get put together for that. So we're, we're, we're working on that. Fourth of July fireworks, professional show behind the preschool at dark on Fourth of July. On behalf of the city of Vader, make sure to spread the word. We'll be getting the banner up here pretty soon, so everyone knows. And city council vacancy. Thank you to Anne McIntosh for service to the city. It's McIntosh. I thought she was going to be here tonight. She had told me this was going to be her, her last meeting. Her, she is moving back home. I'm not sure where home is, but it's not in Vader, so she's leaving the city. So thank you very much to Anne. And of course, with her departure, there'll be a vacancy on the city council. So it's up to the city council to nominate a replacement. And so over the next couple of weeks, start asking around. We'll have it on the agenda at the next meeting. And if anyone, if you have a candidate, the option to nominate them. Moving on to council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? No? Agenda approval. Two changes. First, there is a $6.50 change to the original posted agenda amount. And so if you've picked up your packets, you have the new adjusted amount that will need approval. Also, I'd like to add a line six council discussion regarding security cameras that were.
I make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for June 7th, 2023 with the two additions that the mayor just spoke of.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Hall, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jason, how do you, how do you vote? Jason, are you still there? We really need his vote.
Oh. Hello?
Jason, agenda approval.
I, I, uh, yay.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to minutes approval. Excuse me. We have any, any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for May 24th, 2023.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the council minutes. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Hall in the session. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Voucher to amendment to end May, total of $8,015.28. Amendment for total for May, $99,649.4. For total for June, $2023, $33,453.39.
To the motion of Mr. Hall to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Parsons, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Special reports, this county sheriff's department.
Good evening. The law enforcement totals for the month of May, during the month of May, there were a total of 449 citizen contacts, 19 calls for service, two of which were when the deputy was dedicated in city of Vader, 15 traffic stops resulting in one infraction and four criminal citations, which were like suspended. And as far as the deputy scout is currently actively working on the malicious mischief and has, is looking at a good individual.
A good individual?
Well, I'm saying good individual. I'll call it good suspect, meaning the person obviously wasn't even good.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to city business. Oh, yes, the public hearings. City business item number one, public hearing. This will be for the six-year transportation improvement plan, 2024 to 2029. Did we decide we don't need to take a vote to open these entities? Because they're already, because they're, it's a done deal because we had advertised them? Absolutely. I open this public hearing at 6:19 PM to, for the transportation improvement plan for 2024 to 2029. Anywhere the public have anything to discuss with regard to transportation improvement plan? Thought that's why you were all here. I'll ask again. Any members of the public have anything to discuss with the public hearing? To wait at least one full minute, so I can say a different time when we. Close the public hearing. So I, I'll, I'll talk to them while we wait for the. Transportation Improvement Plan, it's an annual requirement. All cities that are, that operate under the Growth Management Act are to update their TIP yearly and have it done by the end of June and posted to Department of Commerce by the first of July. Annual requirement. Not a big deal for the city. All right, hearing no members of the public that have anything to contribute. I'll close this public hearing at 6:20 PM. Moving on to the second public hearing of the night. This is the Community Development Block Grant closeout for the wastewater treatment plant improvement. The city did, you know what? Let's just open this public hearing at 6:20 PM. Any members of the public have anything to talk about regarding the closeout for the wastewater treatment plant? Don't hesitate to stop me as I talk for 60 seconds. So we got a $750,000 grant for the wastewater treatment plant. Community Development Block Grant comes with certain requirements. One of those is public hearings. Both at the beginning and at the end, where public can come and comment regarding the. I'm really not sure what the public is supposed to say, seeing as we already spent the money and we're closing out the grant. But it is a time for them to give testimony to the council regarding that, that grant. I feel it was well spent, it was really well spent on the city.
How many years was that? When we first knew that we had to replace them? Like 15?
Man, they were talking about it before I got on the council. I mean, they had gone through a different engineering firm at least once, and that was 2013. Remember they had, before everyone else's time, they had, Blue Ray, I think, was down there? So there was, so that we were trying to, the, they had a private company with like a research and development type setup, and they brought in shipping containers. And inside the shipping containers were wastewater treatment equipment, and they had two of them down there. And so they plumbed all of our waste through these shipping containers. And they had treatment, UV treatment and, what do they call it? Some kind of filter. Anyway, and they ran it through the system and then it went out to the pond. And then the idea was that eventually we could just have those instead of upgrading the pond. But they were electricity, they were very high in electricity costs to run, and these filters were expensive. And the, the couple that was running it, they were having a hard time doing the paperwork that ecology needed of them. And so they really couldn't pass the state requirements. And so that whole system got pulled out and then we migrated over to the Civil West. So yeah, there's, if you do a little digging online about Vader and wastewater and Blue Ray, The Chronicle has done an article about it a while back, and you can see pictures of it down there. Yes, it's be all remote monitoring. They could, they could do everything needed to do from home and not have to have staff down here. So that, that was the dream. But it was super expensive. Oh, and they didn't want to sell it to you. They wanted you to rent it. And so you have a permanent, a permanent subscription fee for your wastewater equipment. And so that would have been expensive.
It's just nice that it's.
And that's what we're here talking about, segueing back to the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant closeout for the wastewater treatment plant. There's no other comment from the public. I'll close this meeting at, public hearing at 6:04 PM. Thank you. And what, we had like, what, got $2,000 left of that $750,000 and so. Did a pretty good, pretty good job squeezing, squeezing that, that money. All right, moving on to item number three, council to consider the special event application for the annual Fourth of July fireworks show. So yes, it is our show and it is our application.
I make a motion that we approve the event application for the annual Fourth of July fireworks show.
The motion of Mr. Parsons to approve the Fourth of July special event application. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Hall, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jason?
Aye. Aye?
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number, item number four, council to consider updating city of Vader policies, procedures and guidelines, inventory and control policy, controlled assets. So a while back, we talked about this, about changing the inventory control. It used to be $5. So everything in the city that was $5 or more was written down on a list. And every year, all the clerks had to go through and verify that they could find every piece of, every piece of, everything the city owned that was $5 or more. So it's a very large list when you start thinking of everything that's worth $5 or more. I mean, that's why, that's why these old chairs have inventory control tags on the side of them, right? It's a little ridiculous. So we asked the council to raise the limit to $100, so it would make that list a lot shorter. Council agreed to do $50. We neglected to bring this form back to council for final approval. So here it is. In its current form, it's, it's written as $100. We again are asking council perhaps if they'd be interested in raising the limit to $100 for the items that the clerk had to track. Because again, that would keep things like office chairs and desks off the list.
How do you determine the value?
What was that?
Because right now it's at 50.
Oh, is it? Oh, I thought, I thought it was at 100. Okay.
Okay, is it 100 though?
If council wanted to bump it up to 100, that would be what the clerks thought would be the best number, given.
So we need to approve this or?
I make a motion to approve it with the $100 change.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the policies and procedures and guidelines with the additional $50 for a hundred dollar change to the inventory.
The motion of Mr. Parsons to approve the guidelines with the noted change instead of a $50 amount, given $100. Is that acceptable? Second of Mr. Hall. This is one of those things that the auditors like to see. They have good guidelines and it saves the clerk's work having, every year having to track down every little thing that's, every shovel and. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jason, how do you vote on the inventory policies and guidelines?
Jason, don't let the eggs burn.
Well, no, he's got some. Burn someone's, burn someone's burger, it'd be bad.
That's right.
Jason, we are waiting for your vote on the inventory guidelines.
I vote yeah.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider resolution 11, 2023, the planning committee appointment of Tom Priest. Hopefully you've gotten to see his application. I think we actually looked at it at the last meeting. Priest lives just outside this, just on the other side of West Side Highway. Still allowed to be a member of the planning committee. He is in the military. Lots of administrative experience, and he'd like to serve on the planning committee.
I make a motion that we approve the planning committee appointment of Tom Priest.
The motion of my Mr. Parsons to approve the planning committee appointment. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And the last addition, Warden Park security cameras. So obviously you've got a lot of vandalism down there. There was actually some, something even more vandalism just as of yesterday. And one of those new garbage cans down there has the gray plastic slats that go all the way around. Someone used some type of saw or, or some other type of cutting device and just, just cut the heck out of one of them. Just the shavings everywhere, the saw and everything. So they really, really kind of messed up one of those cans. We do have some, some, a very old outdated security system in the jail, but there's only two cameras. They don't capture a whole lot. Quite frequently, we rely on the church across the street. They have cameras, but they don't have any that are pointed in that direction. So we have, really have no way of capturing who that, that was. So similar to the security system that's at McMurphy Park, we'd like to install a camera system at, at Warden. My request is that council approves up to $1,500 for a security system. Next week, we'll run the idea by Parks Board, make sure that they're on board with that expenditure from the park board budget. And then assuming both council and park board agree, we'll get those ordered and installed.
So I make a motion that we approve $1,500 spending for the security cameras at the park.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve $1,500 for cameras at the park. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, then we'll, then we'll go to do this and we'll be able to get, have full coverage out there.
I can't believe, why was someone doing that?
It is, it's unfortunate. Worked so hard to get something out there.
So is there any, maybe we need to talk to the attorney, but is, is the county prosecutor, does he take care of this and is he taking care of stuff? Can we make a city ordinance that's like a, like a zero tolerance area? Being in the city, thicker city penalties. So you know, like in domestic violence, I know that an officer has to take one or the other. Somebody has to go to jail when there's two, when domestic violences occur. When we get this vandalism in the city limits, it's just costing us money and.
How about fines too?
And.
Add some fines to it.
Yeah, and then they get a slap on the wrist. Who cares? So let's make them add some penalties to it, some physical labor to it, some actual punishment to make it very uncomfortable for them to decide to do this again.
Well, fine. I don't know if you can do this. It's a legal question, but make sure we make your parents, or the legal guardian responsible and find, make them pay for it with a fine.
I can say that when we have identified the individuals, like for instance, the the Christmas vandal that vandalized the, the display at the jail, those youth were identified and they did have court dates and they, they did have, they did have repercussions. And so, and they had witnesses summoned to the court cases and things. I think they were, I think most of them ended up settling before, I think, out or something, whatever that, that's called. But they they had, they had penalties. They had, they, if they get caught, it's, it's, it's a big deal to them. Well, I, because I know when you were, I'm afraid, when you were taking testimony from, from the park board folks, you wanted to know the amount of money, the damage was.
That's taken the, when they go for restitution, that's stuff that the court looks at. That's where the, if you go to the state, meaning the prosecutor's office, that's stuff that they provide to the court. But as far as manual labor and things like that, okay, good luck. I'm just, not familiar with.
Especially with youth involved.
Exactly.
You can't make them clean it up, or change it, or.
You, recently, there's been some new laws that came down that make it very difficult with youth. I mean, it's almost like they can do the wrong.
Perfect, then their parents can come do the labor.
I'm not saying, I'm just repeating what we're having to do.
Well, what does the most successful town do? I mean, I.
I'm sorry, put it again?
Is it, what does the other cities do? What's that?
Superbad, huh?
Yeah.
Like.
Because well, that and knowing, talking about cameras, knowing that they're being watched. I'm not saying watch why, but they know that they're more likely to be identified. The criminal, someone committing a crime, likes to do it, I think, in the shadows. So they're not trying to be seen. They don't want to be caught. Something like this, they're not stealing something to benefit themselves. This is all the thrill of being able to get away with this and who, you know, I can do it again and like with their friends, it's almost like a trophy or a, you know, so they get a rush. So no, so increasing the likelihood that there's going to be a penalty, i.e. with the cameras or other things, is going to make it less likely that they'll want to make the risk. But again, everybody's different. Those that have self-control, I'm going to do in the first place. So.
Right.
It's, it's difficult. It's everybody.
More along the lines of cleaning, parents making them responsible, fines, monetary. Hit them in the pocketbook.
Yeah, and you have to, again, that's a legal question. You have to speak with an attorney to find out that's something you can do. I'm not an attorney. I can't pretend to be one. And I truly don't know.
All right. Any other comment on this? Yeah, okay. Public comment? Any members of the public have anything to say?
Do you have motion sensor lifestyle?
It's just lit all the time around. All right, members of the public. Elected officials, any final comments tonight?
I have a suggestion. I asked you to legally donate the cameras for you.
It's what they do for Toledo.
Did they?
It might, just so they can get a contract to pull in the buyer to the home. Which I see like two years out or so on.
We'll see, yeah. Okay. What was I supposed to say? Oh, I was going to present Anne McIntosh with this certificate to express the city's sincere appreciation for her, for her loyalty, hard work, patience, dedication to the responsibilities of the council member. Thank you for your time and service, Anne. All right. At that, this meeting is adjourned at 6:39 PM. Thank you for your attendance.